Good evening and welcome to the council meeting for January 27, 2025. I'm Deputy Mayor Grant Berg. Mayor Clayton is joining us online. Councillor Palat is away at a conference. Please rise and join me for the singing of our National Anthem. Thank you to Tenille Towns for the singing of our National Anthem, and to the City of Grand Prairie's Communication Department for the wonderful video. Our land acknowledgement, this city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Cree, Dene, and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty 8 territory within Turtle Island, and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. All right, moving on to Item 4, Adoption of the Previous Council Minutes. Councillor Thiessen.
Oh, Deputy Councillor O'Connor, that's a weird one. I move that council approve the minutes from the previous council meeting held on January 13th, as presented.
And that is in order. I'll call the question.
Mayor Clayton, in favor?
Thank you. Councillor Blackmore? And Councillor Palat is not with us at the moment. And that passed unanimously. If I can get a motion for the adoption of the agenda, Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Chair. I move the council adopt the agenda with the addition of Item 18 and in camera.
Okay, and that is in order, and thank you for that. All the question?
Mayor Clayton, in favor?
Councillor Blackmore? Thank you. We have no delegations today. If you wish to be part of a delegation here to City Council, we invite you to fill in an online form. We do delegations at our 3 o'clock. And if we have council in the evening, we have delegation opportunities then. We do not have that tonight. So moving on to Item 7, Reports. Looks like we have a utility bylaw to put in place. And I'm going to go to Chief Glavin.
Thank you, Chair Berg. So as per our utility bylaw, the city retains the right to set utility rates. And as such, we're here today to present the rates that are proposed to be charged by Aqua Terra for the services that they provide to our residents. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Coulter for the details.
Ms. Coulter?
Thank you through the chair. So as Chief Glavin indicated, this utility bylaw includes rate updates for the 2025 year based on Aqua Terra's 2025 business plan and capital program and their 2025 draft budget. There's also minor housekeeping updates throughout the document and the inclusion of a new section to manage emergencies and outdoor water restrictions. Within the rates, the water, wastewater, and garbage are all seeing slight increases. The recycling charge will see a 40% decrease as a result of the city's participation in the EPR program.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Coulter. Any questions? I see Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Deputy Councillor Berg. I do have a question. Can you clarify for me either Chief Glavin or Ms. Coulter? If we choose not to pass this bylaw, that simply means that Aqua Terra would bill us this amount anyway, and we would make up the difference between what they charge us and what our residents would pay?
Chief Glavin?
Thank you, Chair Berg. That's correct. So if we did not pass on the required increases for Aqua Terra's operations, then the city would be subsidizing the difference.
So one way or another, it comes out of our taxpayers' dollars pockets. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bressi?
Great, thank you, Chair Berg. I've got two questions. Number one is appreciate having some language in about how to treat water restrictions on an emergency basis. I am curious about the fines. I noticed that we've got, it's kind of, usually you see you've got progressive fines for if you don't comply, but this one's got fines that are based on what level of water restriction we're at. I'm curious how the fines would work if you've got somebody who, where you've got water restrictions, they insist on watering their lawn, they water their lawn on one day, they get their ticket, they're watering the lawn again the next day. Would this bylaw give us the authority to continue ticketing them? Or would it just be they can get one fine every time that where you've got water restrictions?
All right, we've got a couple gentlemen from Aqua Terra. Von Bend, and if you guys want to introduce yourself and speak to council.
Sure, so I'll introduce myself, Mike Dopovich with Aqua Terra Vice President, Corporate Services.
And Mike, you can bring that mic closer to you.
And I'm Von Bend, Chief Executive Officer for Aqua Terra. So I'll just address that question. So when we, obviously last year, when we were going through the water restrictions, essentially the drought, we went out and, actually at the request of the shareholders in meetings where we need to be prepared for this if we actually do need to do water restrictions so we're not caught unawares. And so we went out and surveyed the industry. And in particular, we went and modeled our policies after the larger utilities in the province and did a fair bit of work with the City of Calgary and the City of Edmonton to kind of benchmark what we wanted to do with what they had done, because we knew that they would have been well-tested and challenged. So we wanted to try to start from a good place and build off there. So in the question itself is, in that instance, it would be up for multiple fines based on violation occurrences. So that's the way it was modeled, and that's the way some of the other utilities are doing it.
And you're good then, Councillor Bressi?
I've got a completely different question. I'm not sure if you want me to just get back in or ask?
Yeah, get back in.
Good.
Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Chair Berg. I've got a couple of questions, but I guess I'll start with my first one. We're talking EPR. So there's a reduction in the recycling charge, really like that. When do we see the overall reduction of that recycling charge on everyone's Aqua Terra bill through the EPR process?
So the EPR program starts in April. So that's, sorry, so that's when the actual reduction in people's bills would start, in the month of April.
And as stated here?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councillor O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Berg. My question's on math, and I just don't know if my math is different from your math, but if you look at the chart, it says typical monthly charges, 2024. The total comes to 127.57. On the typical 2025 monthly charges, it shows 134.26. When I deduct one from the other, I get $6.69. So I'm just wondering, is there a different factor in here? And everything is dollars, dollars. And so just wondering if I'm not looking at it right.
Gentlemen?
That's, do you have the numbers in front of you?
I do have the numbers in front of me as well. And I'm, with, sometimes with the percentage wise, if you take the actual percentage through the spreadsheet, we do have some rounding that causes some error in there, but I'm not sure. I fully understand your question there, Mr. O'Connor.
Well, when you take the 134.26, and you take it as the average from, and deduct 127.57, there's an increase of 6.69.
Yeah, I don't have 134, so I'm...
Chief Glavin?
Thank you, Chair Berg. So what appears to be the issue is that, so what happened is that we were up to the wire with this report, negotiating with the proponent who is doing the EPR. So that contract didn't get settled till late last week, and it had the former charge in it of over $10, not the new charge of 6.25. So the 134 would be reduced by the difference between what was previously being charged for recycling and what it is now. So I believe 282 is the increase, which would bring it to, just one moment here.
Correct, the 282 brings it up to a monthly total of 142.59. The average home with 16 cubic meters of use.
Chief Glavin?
Just a moment.
Pardon us while we update spreadsheets. I'm going to move on to the next question while you guys figure that out, if that's all right? Or do you have an answer?
Yeah, I have the solution.
Councillor O'Connor?
It looks like the typical 2025 numbers add up to 129.71, which adds to the 282. So it's just that there was a mistake in the column there on the right-hand column. Somebody pulled forward a number, am I correct?
Thank you, Chair Berg. The main difference between, so the difference between what you're seeing on ours and what Aqua Terra has in front of them and why there's a difference in price is that Aqua Terra is including the franchise fee in their tables, which isn't changing as a result of the utility bylaw. So that's the difference in the fee here, is that the, so when they're quoting 142.59, we need to strip out the franchise fee from that, which then gets us to the rates that we're actually in control of in our utility bylaw. That's the difference between.
Thank you. All right, everyone satisfied there? Okay, moving on, Councillor Bosch?
Thank you, Deputy Berg. My question is in regards to when there is a watering ban? And how is this enforced? Does Aqua Terra drive around, or do you have a complaint line? And does it go through our enforcement services? How is that handled?
Yeah, we've been meeting with, so we'd go through enforcement services, we don't have that personnel. So we work with your folks on that, and we've been having discussions on how that would work.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks.
Councillor Bressi?
Great, thank you. I know something that's often important to us is that our residents are paying about what other communities pay. Have you done the analysis of with these changes, where we sit with other Alberta cities?
Yeah, we do keep track of that. And I think that, you know, when we've talked previously, you know, we, obviously affordability is something that we take into effect when we look at our rates and when we maintain the system and provide this service. So when we do look at the affordability, there are challenges that we're seeing, and particularly when we're comparing to the larger centers like Calgary and Edmonton. So when we look at where we're sitting right now, we're a little bit above the median rate. So, and it's heavily influenced by the larger centers where they have economies of scale. So we're essentially a little bit above the median rate. But I think as we're facing into, we're going to be more and more challenged to stay close to that median rate as an entity and as a region, particularly if we aren't growing, right? One of the major things that a utility counts on to offset inflation is growth. And the region itself, you're obviously probably way more familiar with than I am, but from 2004 to about 2016, the size of the city itself probably about doubled. And since that time, we probably added about 5% or 6% population. So when you look at inflation, essentially over time, you're going to be fighting and losing battle. And so we've got a plan to address that, which is, you know, obviously discipline our capital spending, operational improvements. And that's one of the reasons why strategically, we're going out to try to grow our business outside the region. And that's to try to offset some of these factors that are impacting us to try to stay close to the mean overall.
Thank you. And Mr. Bend, just to, I see you've got a number of graphs. Should you want to show any, under your binder, there's a little X, and there's a camera overhead that we can show your graphs, again, should you want to show them?
Yeah, that's just for my aging memory.
Okay. Councillor Thiessen?
Thanks a lot, gentlemen. I'm going to go back to recycling here, because in our contract, it states that the city receives 10% of revenue, excluding the recycling fee. Now we're talking extended producer responsibility. Some of that stuff is coming off of Aqua Terra's hands. But my question for you is recycling now a revenue or an expense item?
So is it an expense to us?
Yeah, are you collecting revenue from recycling, like through the Armada or through otherwise?
So there is, so that's a very small portion of the program. So we do have through different parts of our program, overall, we do have some small revenue sources. But essentially, in the long run and over time, recycling is a cost. So those don't in any way offset the expenses of actually the recycling program. And I think that's part and parcel why, you know, EPRs come in is right, is to try to shift those costs to the responsible party and to try to really generate that circular economy that you talk about, right?
So I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, like in regards to the requirements by the provincial government, EPR and all that stuff, when somebody comes to pick up the recycling, that'll be a truck, that'll be coordinated by Aqua Terra, but it'll be funded by ARMA?
Essentially, ARMA is the oversight body for the actual program. But essentially, yes, for all intents and purposes, the costs for those types, and it varies depending on the service, but essentially, yeah, a lot of those costs are going to be covered through ARMA, basically going back to the producers.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is really appreciate the 40% discount on the recycling fees, but why couldn't we do 80% or 100%? If Aqua Terra is collecting service contracts to pick up recycling, why are we charging our customers?
Mr. Bend?
Yeah, go for it.
So the cost recovery that we're getting from ARMA for the curbside recycling doesn't cover all of the other costs. So we do have additional recycling that is not included in that curbside recycling. We do have our depot center. We've got some of the other types of recycling, the hazardous household materials, those types of things. So there is still some additional cost outside of what the ARMA or circular materials contract is. So that'll be the cost recovery for the contracts associated with picking up from your curbside and taking it to a depot somewhere else in the province.
Okay, if I may just ask one more follow-up question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so in regards to that, then, I guess my thoughts are, like, and I really appreciate the extra recycling that Aqua Terra does, but when I think about it, having guys drive around in trucks picking up recycling might be more cost-intensive than having a building where you're collecting stuff, shipping it out, and in some cases, getting revenue for that as well. So I got a big question mark in my head about why only 40 cents when it seems like most of the recycle cost is going to be covered by the EPR anyways? The bulk of it, at least.
So there is a large component of it that is covered. There is still other components that aren't covered as far as the commercial recycling and other components that we still service. So there is still revenue associated with this, for sure.
Yeah, so just for clarity's sake, does it cost you more to run the recycle depot or more to run the trucks picking up recycling?
The contract for picking up recycling is significantly, is a larger portion than the Eco Center itself. But there's a number of costs incorporated with the administration of all those other components that add into that as well.
Yeah, I guess just what I'm thinking is, if that cost is more and we're collecting revenue to pick up those things from the EPR, then why wouldn't the discount be more than 50% on that recycling? Like, it's not a lot, we're talking dollars and cents here. Like, in the grand scheme, it says 40%, but that reduces 10.49 down to 6 bucks. So that's not a big deal. What about reducing 10.49 down to 2.49? It's kind of my thought, and I think probably most residents who connect to Aqua Terra. But anyways, thank you for answering my questions.
All right, Councillor O'Connor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question is in regards on explaining to the public conservation and why you're talking water rationing, and how important is that, that people conserve water? And that you monitor the Wapiti for your intake? Can you explain that to the public, please?
So yeah, maybe just generally on conservation. So the region's water source is the Wapiti River. And so it's monitored and essentially regulated by Alberta Environment. And so depending on the health of the river itself, they determine how much water folks can withdraw, and those are called diversionary licenses. So you're only allowed to draw so much out of the river. And the river itself, flow varies, and it varies actually quite widely within band and depending on the part of the year. So the important thing to remember with the river flow is there's a certain limit that we can't go past as far as drawing. It'll harm the fisheries, and it'll harm the downstream users. So when we talk about conservating the water, we've got a plan in place. We have a base water load that's about 23,000 to 24,000 liters a day. And it peaks in this, sorry, cubes, cubic meters a day. And it actually peaks in the summer time to about 43,000 to 45,000. And that's what we consider discretionary water use. So that is watering lawns and gardens and that type of use. So this past year, we got close to, well, actually, we were in a period of time where we would have to have had water restrictions had we not worked with Alberta Environment to actually, during a period of time in the spring, to actually increase our water allocation slightly so we can meet that basic water so we can meet that basic water demand. So I think one of the things that we got to remember is the Wapiti can only support so much. So where you can conserve water, it makes sense to conserve water. And there's a couple, there's a couple of requirements. One is a regulatory requirement that we have, and also there's a physical requirement that we have as well. We can only draw so much of the water out of the river based on our infrastructure. So I think it's really important for people to just, when you can conserve, please conserve. And it actually, at the end of the day, it helps everybody all around. It helps us reduce our costs. It actually helps the river itself. And it gets us into a situation where we have continued credibility with the regulators. So when we do get into a situation where we, we have some difficulties, they know us, they know the region, and they give us that kind of credibility to be able to do things here and there to actually maintain the water supply.
One more?
Yep, go ahead.
So you mentioned a couple of steps that the, the community can take to conserve water. Are there any other steps that they can take, like holding water, getting tanks? So that we're not putting pressure on the system? You'd think with the size of the Wapiti, that wouldn't be a problem. But can you recommend to people in the city what they can do?
Yeah, I think the probably that I can recommend if you, the best probably place to go is to our website, where we actually have a, a number of information on there to, to help people conserve water. And there's a number of different things, very simple things that actually add up to, at the end of the day, being material. Simply having rain barrels, you know, for your gardens makes a big difference, right? Those, those types of things, when you multiply it over, you know, a city of 60,000 to 70,000, it's, it's a lot of water. And so we can cut down on those peaks. And the other things is, you know, like make sure if you're using your appliances, make sure they're full. Dishwasher is full, washing machine is full, right? You know, if you have teenagers, you know, send them away until they're adults, so they can shower. So, you know, those are a number of things that we can do. There are simple things, but when you add them up, it makes a big difference. When you think about it, we almost double our water consumption from essentially a base to the summertime. So we're using a lot of water in the summer, and most of it's going to grass.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Ben, one of the things, just to comment for myself, I was reading an article this morning about the number of water emergencies in central and southern Alberta. So I appreciate that we're being proactive to this, but can you speak to the water emergencies in central and southern Alberta?
Briefly, I think that, you know, traditionally, we haven't had, there's, there's three zones, or really only two zones in the province from a water perspective, and that's the south and the north. And, and the, the south has traditionally always had challenges with water. But it's one of the largest water users through the irrigation districts in the large, in large cities. And so they've had, and Alberta has an interesting system for allocating water. It's called first in time, first in use. And so what that means is if you happen to have a very old water license, then you have the ability to draw your water regardless of what's going on. And so in the south, they, and they're all, and they're all, they're, they're legal documents, and they're very large organizations that have these, and obviously they want their water. So they, the, the government, the regulator, and the users in the south got together and worked out a 10% voluntary with reduction in all of the uses this summer. And that kind of barely got them through. So I think that there's a, there's an awakening to the, to the fact that our water isn't limitless. The north, we, we have, we have more, we traditionally have more, we have less use. But we saw this year that we had the lowest water flow in Wapiti since 1961. And we're essentially in places where we're very close to having to restrict water use just to make sure that everyone had enough for their basic use. And I don't think that's going to go away anytime soon. We're seeing still the rivers recovered, but we're not seeing a lot of precipitation, we're not seeing a lot of snow in the mountains. And so I, I think it's something that's going to be with us for a while.
Okay, anything else for our delegation for Aqua Terra? No, I need somebody to do business. Counsel Blackmore.
I would move that counsel give first reading to bylaw C 1365E being an amendment to the utility bylaw.
Okay, that is in order. I'll call the question. And that passes unanimously?
I move second reading of this bylaw.
Okay, any discussion or debate? Okay, I'll call the question. And Counsel Blackmore, third reading. And just a reminder, this must pass unanimously to get to fourth reading.
I move that we have third reading of this bylaw at this meeting.
Okay, that is in order. I'll call the question. And that passes unanimously, so fourth reading. Counsel Blackmore.
I move that counsel give third reading to bylaw C 1365E being an amendment to the utility bylaw.
Okay, and that is in order. Call the question. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time and your thoughtful questions.
Item 7.2, Appointment of Returning Officer. Who's going to grab that one? Acting Chief Toronto?
Thank you, Chair Burke. So as per provincial legislation, the city is required to appoint a returning officer for the municipal election that will be held this upcoming October. The, with some staffing changes, we recently appointed Kim Pinnock as the Director of Legislative and Executive Services. And it's a recommendation that she serve as the city's returning officer, replacing me as, as, as an interim measure that was, that was put in place. So that's our recommendation going forward, and she would be the returning officer from now until the election period.
Any questions from counsel? No? Okay, I see a couple of names in the queue, but I'm assuming that's to do business. Counsel O'Connor.
Thank you, Acting Mayor, Deputy Mayor Grant Burke. I move that counsel appoint Kim Pinnock as returning officer for the 2025 municipal election.
And that's in order. Call the question. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 7.3, Combative Sports Commission. And who's introducing that? Okay, Chief Lemieux.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the recommendation is to appoint two members to the Combative Sports Commission so that they can meet quorum and continue to conduct their business.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? No? Okay, so Counsel O'Toole for business?
Yes, thank you very much. I move the counsel appoint Robin Moe and John Rudek to the Combative Sports Commission for a term ending December 31st, 25. And you all know that the province is looking at revamping the combative sports and making it a provincial body, possibly. And so these are people that have been on the board already. We're just reappointing them for a short time.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions? No? Call the question. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 8, Committee Business, Financial and Administrative Services. I am going to throw that one over to Counsel Tiesin. As per the text I sent you before the council meeting.
Well, that's all right. Everyone will have to endure me scrolling through all the Aqua Terra documents into our financial administration minutes. I apologize to everybody. This was, I should look at my phone all the time. There we go. I move that we approve the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held on, sorry, I'm on a different calendar. I'm going to try January the 20th, 21st. Yeah, it's the day after the inauguration. I should know this. All right, anyways, okay, January 21st, as presented.
Okay, I'll call the question. Mayor Clayton? Item 8.2, Operational Services. Oh, sorry.
We've got some business to take care of there.
There is some business. I'm a little excited to move on, but.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Um, yeah, Counsel Tiesin.
I know I was throwing you off your game here because I wasn't on my game. That's what happens. It's the dominoes effect there, everybody. But with this, we have business. So I move that the Financial and Administrative Services Committee recommend counsel receive this report for information. Yeah, we, yeah, sorry. That's, sorry, I meant, never mind. I got to go all the way back again.
So counsel received the 2024 Audit Service Plan for Information.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay.
Didn't I? Where have the tape? Yeah, as, as, as stated. Thank you. Just here for last right now, everyone.
All right, call the question. And that carries unanimously. Meeting highlights, Counsel Tiesin.
Sounds good. Um, yeah, Chief Eggway gave us some highlights of her service director area. At the time, we had, of course, the report on the auditor and how they would go over our service file as well. We just passed that for information. Taxation and assessment, updated the tax installment payment letters, and they have been mailed to property owners as of last week who pay their taxes monthly. These letters will indicate an updated monthly payment, which will take into consideration their new assessment and the proposed tax changes for 2025. They're just an estimate for right now, as five months, for the first five months of the year. And once we levy the taxes later on in a couple of months, the payment amounts will be revised to our property owners. Administration is currently also working through year end procedures in preparation for the 2024 audit, which is scheduled for early March. And in procurement, supply chain management, our procurement has a few bids on the market from seasonal rental vehicles, mission estate storm rehabilitation, homeless prevention diversion services, and Crystal Lake tree planting, design to name a few. Thank you very much. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Tiesin. Moving on now to Operational Services with Counsel O'Connor.
Thank you very much, Acting Deputy Mayor. I'd like to move that counsel adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held January 21st, as presented.
I'll call the question. Mayor Clayton? All right, so we've got a few, a couple items of business for you, Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, thank you very much. The Canadian, local Canadian Tire has agreed to make a large gift of almost a million dollars towards the Jump Start program. So I'd like to move counsel direct administration to negotiate and finalize a gift agreement with Canadian Tire Jump. Did you want somebody to present?
No. You're fine.
Okay, Jump Start charities for a donation of an inclusive playground structure to be installed in Lions Park and to be named the Jump Start Inclusive Playground for the duration of its usable life. And with that, they will create some handicap parking there. They will have a site that has all the proper facilities. And it's gonna, they're going to upgrade the bathrooms there, and it's going to be a welcome addition to Lions Park. So I want to thank the Dungies for, from Canadian Tire for making this donation. And I think the city contribution will be a large portion as well. And so I'd like you to support this motion, please.
Okay, thanks. Any questions or comments for Chief Klavan? No? Okay, moving on then, we will call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, we have a housekeeping item to take care of today in regards to just changing some verbiage in one of the agreements. So I'd like to move that counsel give first reading to bylaw C 1323E being an amendment to the subdivision authority bylaw.
Okay, and I will call that question on first reading. Carries unanimously. Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, I'd like to move that counsel give second reading to bylaw C 1323E.
Okay, any comments or debate on, on this motion? Not seeing any. I call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, I'd like to move that counsel have third reading to by, of bylaw C 1323E at this meeting.
And again, just a reminder that this must pass unanimously to go to the third reading. I'll call the question. And Counsel O'Connor, that passes unanimously.
Yes, I'd like to move counsel give third reading to bylaw C 1323E being an amendment to the subdivision authority bylaw.
All right, I'll call the question. And that too carries unanimously. Counsel O'Connor, meeting highlights.
Yes, just let me open it up here. And here we go. Engineering and Transportation Services, the following have now been posted, RFP for the Bear River Control Structure Annual Regulatory Inspections. Try and say that three times. And RFP for Crystal Lake Tree Planting Project in partnership with FRIA. And the following have now closed, Road Rehabilitation Phase One, RFP for Road Condition Assessment and Pavement Management System, an update 2025 to 2027. And the traffic, oh, if I could get my tongue to work, it'd be really good. Traffic Signal Rehabilitation Program recommences with work on intersection of, at 68th Avenue and 108th Street, and 98th Avenue and 100th Street. And a pothole on arterial roads is underway, along with the removal of storage piles and cul-de-sacs and parking lots. And the only thing is, great news from Transit Services. Trips for accessible transit clients to tour the Northern Lights show was a success with 61 clients taking part. And total conventional ridership is up 44.5%. Broken down as follows. Adult ridership up 36%. Youth ridership up 63%. And on, on-demand ridership up 33%. And senior ridership up 15%. So kudos to transit.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item 8.3, Public and Protective Services. Counsel Bosch.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Burke. I move that counsel adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held January 21st, as presented.
And that's in order. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Meeting highlights, Counsel Bosch.
Thank you, Chair Burke. It was a fairly light meeting, other than our update through Chief Lemieux and his team. So the Grand Prairie Police Service, there are 12 recruits completing their basic training in February, and they all go into field training beginning of March. Passionate Heart Awards nominations are open until January 28th. And the award, awards will be presented February 14th at the Bonnet's Energy Center. East Link Center achieved a significant milestone this month, surpassing 10,000 members for the first time in history. So congratulations to them. In that facility, the Piranhas Winter Fest Swim Meet was held January 18th and 19th. That hosted 200 athletes plus coaches, volunteers, and spectators. So a great event for them. So a great event for them. And they have a beautiful score clock that they love to have these events now, have the ability to have these events. Try It Day welcomed new opportunities this year with squash, table tennis, and Arctic leadership. Something else new was the pickleball club was the sole recipient in the region to receive the active communities initiation or initiative grant. And they received just under $67,000 that they'll use to repair the drainage on some of the outdoor courts. The city received another grant for the Challengers Baseball Program Administration, and they'll be partnering with a local group to host inclusive program, providing an opportunity for children with cognitive or physical disabilities to participate in the game of baseball. Really happy to hear that. A new concession owner at the Radbourne, Ernie Radbourne Pavilion, Moscow Eats, welcome to the pavilion. The Grand North Winter Festival, of course, was held January 10th through 12th. And that was, that was a great event, great weather this year, unlike last year. And we saw about 6,000 participants. And then again, Malanka was sold out at the Bose on January 15th, the best food like ever. And the Grand Prairie Storm celebrated minor hockey night on January 15th with over, is it 39 hockey teams and 650 players in attendance? And then just this past weekend was a 90s mixed dance tour. So lots going on. Thanks for all the information, Chief Lemieux.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Bosch. Item 9, Correspondence. There is one letter. It's not a long one, and it follows up what Councilor Bosch was just mentioning. So I'll read it. It's again quite short. It's from the Grand Prairie Piranha Swim Club, dated January 13th, 25. Dear her worship Jackie Clayton, Mayor, City of Grand Prairie and Council. On behalf of the Grand Prairie Piranha Swim Club Board of Directors, I want to extend our appreciation to mayor and council for their commitment to supporting the installation of a new results display board and electronic timing system at the East Link Center. It is an outstanding piece of equipment. Your commitment to improving the user experience for swimmers and spectators has elevated an already great facility to a much higher status and sets the conditions for our club to be able to host provincial and national level events. The facility, the display board, and the electronic timing system makes the City of Grand Prairie's East Link Center one of the best, if not the best, competitive swimming facilities in the entire province. On behalf of swimmers, coaches, and parents, a huge Piranhas thank you goes to you. Sincerely, James Robinson, President, Grand Prairie Piranha Swim Club. So thank you for the beautiful letter. Much appreciated. We have no delegation business, notice of motion. So what I will do then is we'll go to roundtable. I believe that's where we're at. Yep. And Mayor Clayton, I'm gonna let you go first because you always go last when you're online. So you're up.
Well, I appreciate that. I actually am gonna postpone until I'm there in person. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilor O'Connor. Councilor O'Connor goes near the end.
I usually go near the end, and now I'm first, and I'm going. I'm not prepared, so that's fine. Attended a stakeholder meeting with the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association and with city council. Attended a monthly cab meeting, community and about homelessness. Attended a try-it day at the East Link Center, and we had people playing table tennis and squash and Arctic games. And so that was great. And then attended the 50th anniversary of the Malanka Gala. And it was amazing, brought a tear to your eye. There were many people crying there. It's the first time that they had all of the different cultures from all over Ukraine doing dance, and it was amazing. And the little ones brought a little tear to their eye. They were so cute. It was unbelievable. Met with MLA Dick and CEO of the Alberta Machine Intelligence Institute. And there's some great things happening there, finding efficiencies that all businesses can take advantage of, where the machine intelligence information just explodes the thing. In 2017, was only 117 million amount of data that was feed in. Now it's 1.76 billion assets. So it's a tremendous thing for finding efficiencies. Attended the Yak January meeting with Councilor Berg and had standing committees and attended a Sport Connection Board meeting on last Thursday and had a stakeholder meeting with city council and the Grand Prairie Public School Board. And that was a great meeting. So, and that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilor O'Connor. Councilor Bosch.
Thank you, Councilor Berg, or Deputy Mayor Berg. I'll talk about the Alberta Machine Intelligence Institute a little bit, just to expand on it a touch more. They called it the Alberta Machine. And what Councilor O'Connor was referring to is through ChatGPT. And some of those numbers in 2018, 117 million connections. 2019, it changed to 1.5 billion. 2020, 175 billion connections. So learning, progressing. And they're looking at the next generation of this to come out fairly soon to be 176 trillion. So AI is powerful, and it certainly grows very, very quickly. The other thing I'll talk about is a meeting with the Peace Library Systems last Saturday. And we went, basically, the entire afternoon was spent working on the new master agreement coming to all the municipalities here in the very near future. So that's a big project that hasn't been looked at in about 25 years. So a lot of work with that, and we'll keep everybody informed as we know more. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilor Bosch. Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Berg. I have attended most of the stuff that's been gone already, but we did attend a meeting. It's, the meeting was basically a follow-up discussion from the inquiry from the recent death in competitive sports. The province is doing an inquiry and asking different committees and councils, commissions throughout the province to give some recommendations on what they feel needs to be improved on. And that list was established by the province through the inquiry that is taking place. We met with Richard Arnold. He's the lead. We have a gentleman named Victor Guy. And he's the, basically the ambassador of looking through this, the gentleman that's giving information and advice, as well as each commission. And administration from Grand Prairie here is Stephanie Casely. And we were interviewed for about 40 minutes, and we'll move on. We'll probably have another one of these meetings in the next month or so. But the goal, there is no goal set here, but the conversation is coming to provincial commission. And there's 150 questions to be asked on how that's gonna happen, and we're gonna narrow that down. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Bressi.
Great, thank you. I was at a few of these things already mentioned. A few things that I was on my own for were, of course, my Alberta municipality stuff. We've formed a risk committee working group that I am getting to chair, and I'm also chairing our investment advisory committee. So I had kickoff meetings for the year for both of those, and I got to attend executive committee as well. Something the police commissions kicked off is a transition management committee, which is myself and two other commissioners getting together with Chief Lemieux, as well as Officer in Charge King and Chief Lacusta to just talk about how the nuts and bolts of the transition are going. So it was great to have all those three voices in the room, along with commissioners, to chat about next steps and figure out how we continue to work together to pursue the future of policing here in Grand Prairie. And speaking of the police commission, Councilor O'Toole and I also got to attend a commission meeting. At it, we had our organizational meeting for the year. So Chair Wong and Vice Chair Ryman were both re-elected to their positions by the commission. Something that was published there is the commission honorariums for the past year. We want to make sure that we're being very transparent as a commission, and some places it can be hard to find what commissioners get paid, but we want to make sure that residents could see that. Something I will highlight there is Councilor O'Toole and I, you'll see the number zero for us because it's just part of our council job, but the public members do get a little bit of something for being on there. And a few of the transition updates are, we do have more experienced officers who have been deployed since November. We've got a couple who hit the streets on the watch, and we also have one who is assigned to the Caribou Child and Youth Center. We've got more experienced police officers coming in as we speak. And something we're really excited about is there's been 288 applicants for 14 spots in our recruit class, too. So we continue to see as we're doing recruitment that there are people who are very interested in being part of a modern police service up here in northern Alberta. So excited to see how much interest that we are seeing as we build the service. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Bressi. Councilor Tiesin.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Berg. Yeah, there was, it was a good week. You're really, really busy. I do want to make a quick comment on the tears that were flowing at Malanka. As being the other member of council that was there with Councilor O'Connor, I can attest to the fact that it was the sentimental tears of Mike O'Connor, who was just so happy to be there, and the performances and the cuteness of everybody and the decor, the regalia. It was all good. He was a bit overwhelmed. He was lucky I was there to sit beside him and keep him calm. But it was a glorious event, and happy 50th anniversary, Troy and, this was their 50th anniversary here in the community for their event. Speaking of some of the official council external duties that I've been appointed to, Grand Spirit Foundation met last week Friday, and we had, of course, your typical directors meeting. We had a presentation from our finance CFO department there, and you know, we found that, hey, we're doing actually really well. That's because the province has come up and topped up a few extra funding, like capital maintenance and renewal, as well as operational funding as well. So that means when it comes time to do the requisitions, Grand Spirit Foundation is gonna be asking for less when we have budgeted to ask for more, which is always a good news stories for city residents and the organization of the City of Grand Prairie. Also, this is interesting to note, just on paper, the board agreed to an arrangement, potentially in Claremont Lands, in regards to building another private-public partnership, split of market, family housing, as well as affordable housing for seniors as well there. We agreed to enter into that agreement, but of course, it's all funding stipulated based off of the agreement that the county sent forward to Grand Spirit Foundation. And it would be, if it goes forward, it would be right across from the Lakeview complex where all our seniors are currently, and hopefully build out that corner. We did get a bit of an update on the Smith Affordable Housing Project. So funding just before the holiday break, our CEO met with CMHC to discuss the Smith and Claremont applications. And at that time, CMHC had no problems with the issues, which is great. And said that we could also apply for the AHPP program, which is a provincial program, and it wouldn't inhibit our funding. Well, currently, because of the P3 partnerships and this being relatively new to the country as far as receiving government funding and stuff like that, we have hit a bit of a speed bump. We haven't been rejected completely, but they did say the not-for-profit social profit is a bit of a distinction that they're gonna have to work through in their process. So the province is on board, helping us with that as far as seeing if we could get the full 95% loan to value on the Smithland project. Currently, as it stands right now, in our last word that we heard, it would only be a 75% loan. So that, just equating it, is about a $6 million bump. But the province and the people that we talked to there said that they don't see that as a problem, and they'll work with us to clear that hurdle and see if that CMHC funding can come through as it is. Other meetings that I had throughout the week, stakeholder meetings with Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association and Grand Prairie Public School District. I also went to the Northwest Polytechnic Studio Reception and Ribbon Cutting with Grant Berg. We were there. It's really nice to see that studio up and running. I know how much of an investment, several different people from Brad Mates to the college back in the day have put that in there, from Curtis Smith and the programming. It's a long time coming, and I think the big fear when they cut the music department at Northwest Polytechnic is that would, all that investment would disappear. Well, we found out Saturday that Northwest Polytechnic is very proud of the studio and are looking at seeing how the community will respond to it by offering it up for people to run and operate it there. So it was really good to be a part of that because it is a piece of the college that I always hold fond in my heart and would never want to see go away. Finally, that's been all this. Ladies and gentlemen, it is literacy week. See you reading. I know Councilor O'Connor and I were out and about at different schools here today. We met up, Councilor O'Toole was too, but I ran into Councilor O'Connor, Councilor O'Toole, so no offense. We met up at Riverstone School. We get lots of requests at this time of year, and I would encourage whether you're on council or in administration, or you're just a parent watching us here and now, reading to your kids is perhaps the best thing that you can do to not only spur on their own learning and reading comprehension, but to nurture and feed their imagination. And that's where it goes. And what I said to everybody today is, and I'll just reel back for this, and then I'll yield from the mic, but reading will take you everywhere. That's right, that was only a second, but there you go. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. That's my report.
Thanks, Councilor Tiesin. Councilor Blackmore.
Well, I don't really know if I can follow up with that. I have no shirt to flash. You know, council talks, and just about every roundtable will say that we had a stakeholder meeting with someone. And someone asked me last week, what exactly is a stakeholder meeting? So this gives us an opportunity to meet with other organizations in our community who are doing good work and whose work may support the work that we do at council. And the work that we do at council may support that stakeholder. So, for example, we met with Grand Prairie Regional Tourism, had a discussion with their CEO, Jasmine Grievitt, their Chair, Dennis Grant, and a couple of members of their board. And they filled us in on the plans that they have moving forward over the next 12 months and how excited they are to be up and running at full capacity in the community again. We also shared with each other our advocacy items that we like to talk to about with other levels of government and how we can support each other through those advocacy roles. Then later, a week later, we met with Grand Prairie Public School District. Again, much the same type of conversation. We talked about each other's advocacy priorities, how we can support that. We talked about the fact that the school district is facing full capacity at several of their schools. They're over 100% at Grand Prairie Christian School, and both of the high schools are now approaching 100% capacity. And so we will see those three schools be built onto over the next couple of years, three years, however long it takes for Alberta Infrastructure, Alberta Education, and the school district to get together, which is always a bit of a challenge for the school district. And we should be pleased that they work so hard to provide for the future of Grand Prairie through our students. And so that's how I'll conclude my report, as I don't see that I should reiterate all of the other events we all attended together.
Yeah, thanks, Councilor Blackmore. I appreciate how you bundled that up in an education piece. So for me, I sit on the Grand Prairie Public Library Board. It is literacy week. If you want to find out what they're doing at the library, you can go to their website or the children's section, and they've got a list of events. Also, we went through the staff satisfaction results, and just to summarize, the library is a great place to work. I sit on the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Board, and we met and then shortly after came here to council chambers where we discussed the development of ag and culinary tourism. So that is fully funded by Travel Alberta, but something that they're very active with and very excited to bring forward. Sorry, the youth advisory committee with Mike O'Connor. Kool-Aid Society did a presentation for the committee. And then for literacy week, on a personal note, although I am doing officially as a counselor, I wrote a series of children's books about six years ago. The first one is fully illustrated. I couldn't be happier. So tomorrow, that book gets its debut at Ivy Macklin School. So looking forward to that. And that is my report. And so our final act. And so our final act then is, can I get a motion to go in camera? Councillor, oh, sorry? Okay, and we won't be coming back, but I, we'll take a quick little five-minute break in case media has any questions. Councillor O'Connor?
Yes, I move we go in camera.
Okay, that is in order. Bressi in favor?
Teason in favor?
Oh, councillor Palat, your vote, we see you pop back on. You must be absent. Okay, and that passes unanimously.